Yeah, it's picking up.
Uh, so my name is Mike Legurt, Mayor of Cottonwood Heights, and this is the Cottonwood Heights City Council Work Session
It up really good. I'm not recording it, so see how it's moving around.
for Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Time does not stop. Goodness gracious.
Beautiful. So it's picking this up good.
Yeah, I think it's perfect.
And that's how it's wonderful. Why it was giving us such a heavy class?
Okay, first item on our agenda today is a review of our business meeting agenda for this evening.
And just the opinion he asked.
Because I think they keep doing little micro updates to mix or.
Be surprised.
We have a busy few hours ahead of us, so we best uh best our uh financial director Scott George as the leader of the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. We all have our city council reports that I think our our citizens will really enjoy hearing from us. Uh, and then we'll have a citizen comment period. The item five point zero, we do have a public hearing scheduled for this evening, which is um to talk about a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. That's wrong in fact. That's for this this current but you're not the previous one. Um, then actually, why don't we have a um? Actually, we'll come back to that, right?
Yeah, we'll be talking about it then.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll we'll be talking about this in just a couple of minutes. So we have two standing quarterly reports. So first we'll hear from uh our finance and administrative services director Scott George on our our quarterly financial report. And then our assistant fire chief from United Fire Riley Pilgrim will give his report. He is going to be joining us from Zoom. Um, I don't know if he's on yet, but he will be and he'll be he'll be delivering his report over Zoom as well tonight.
Pictures up there.
His pictures up there. Okay, great. Oh, yeah, there he is. And then we have our our packet shows four action items. We're gonna we're actually gonna uh put off the first one, which is seven point one, which is consideration of ordinance three ninety-two, which is their update to the flood ordinance. We are going to hold off for for a uh till the first meeting in February. So I I wanted to apologize. I know our um yeah, Mike Jonathan has gone through a ton of work and so hopefully you're okay with just us giving this a couple more weeks' time. Make sure we everybody gets comfortable and then we'll vote on the updates to spreads.
Yeah, just in the meantime, any anytime if you have questions or any clarification, just let us know.
Okay, perfect. So the first item that we will actually act upon this evening will be consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five, which is attending to an appointment to to the to the uh Cottonwood Heights Park Trails and Open Space Committee PTAS. So Tim, do you want to give us some background on this appointment?
Yeah, so we've included information on Zachary Geiger in your packet. He's an individual that is very passionate about the work on this committee. In fact, he's been attending the meetings not as a member and said that even if he isn't pointed, he wants to be involved because it's something he he really has a passion for. He's served on other committees in other cities. He's uh hasn't lived here for a long, long time, but we're excited to have him on this uh to be considered tonight because he's someone that I think would be add a lot of value to the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. So we're recommending approval of his appointment.
Great. Any questions coming from the council? So so after the next item we will will consider will be consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six approving an agreement with Brown's Amusements, Inc. For the Butlerville Days Carnival. Can you believe we're already to that point? Uh, Tim, would you want to discuss that a little bit as well?
I'll put together a memo on this, so if you have any specific questions, but same same company as last year, we felt very comfortable with the work that they've done. The contract is basically the same. We get an upfront base fee of twenty thousand dollars and then anything above seventy-five thousand dollars, we get a portion of that um as well, plus they pay for the games and food vendors as well. Um, they paid us for that as well, so nothing different. We're excited to have them back and they did a pretty good job for us last year. Is there anything?
No, that's perfect. Thank you. Is this a multi-year option on it?
It's year two on the three-year contract.
Okay, yeah. And we did quite well. Remind me, we did quite well with them and it seemed like their equipment was better than we've had sometimes in the past. I had some compliments on that.
And I think their organization has been better than some of our past vendors as well, how they laid it out, how they
Well, last year they did expand a little more than what that's the original plan was, but they'll get they'll get worked out. I have the I they they are good vendor and that's very, very, very popular.
Yeah. Is that the best we've done as far as numbers?
Yeah, as far as the financing, yeah, it really it really was. They added that Thursday night and it really made a difference.
Yeah, great. Something our I think our entire city looks forward to. Then we'll have a funny one time again for Butlerville Day. So so then so we'll vote on that agreement and then we'll move to seven point four, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, proving the form of an inter-local sales tax pledge agreement and the issuance of the city obligation created there under in the maximum aggregate principal amount of fourteen point five million dollars and related matters. So uh, Tim, yours.
Yes, so we'll we will be having a conversation in our C D R A meeting here at about five o'clock. We'll be going into a closed meeting about other items, but after that, we will come out. We will have Matt Doug Dale talk about the specifics regarding the bond parameters resolution that you'll be considering in the C D R A meeting. But what this is, is this relates to that. It relates to the bond parameters decision that you'll make and what we're looking at, which will be backing uh the C D R A or the redevelopment agency bond with sales tax revenue. And this agreement um basically would would uh make that arrangement, the interlocal between the two entities occur with that backing the sales tax funds for this. So that's what this will be for. More specifics on the bond and bond parameters, we'll we'll talk about the C D R A meeting in a little bit, but that's what this is.
Questions, comments? We'll have a lot more time to discuss this during the afternoon. And then the last item is approval of the consent calendar. And actually, we don't have those minutes prepared, so we won't be considering those tonight. So one of the things that I failed to mention is is council member Burrell um is is excused. I I don't know if she there's the possibility she might join later.
Texted you and I and she's on her way.
Okay, so it looks like she's on her way and she will be joining us later. So, okay.
Let me tell when I have space.
You have some space. Okay, so item three on our uh work session agenda, and we only have one staff report for today. And this is specific to what I talked about, proposed budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three. We'll have our administrative and fiscal services director Scott George just give us some background.
Okay, so there are a number of items that um we need to do budget adjustments on. These are things that we didn't anticipate at the beginning of the year or grants and things that we might anticipate, but we don't know the details and we just come and make that as little adjustments throughout the year. We mean, we try and hold them down to no more than a quarter or so, and this is our second uh adjustment for the current year. The main um item on this adjustment is has to do with uh things to do with the um the possible purchase of uh some property and we'll go into some of that. Um, so I'm sharing my screen here on this. This you have this memo in your packet, but to go over, I've got it organized by funds. So first, we'll start with the general fund. So in in the general fund, the first item we've got is a transfer to the C D R A fund. And this is to cover various uh expenses related to the Hillside Plaza potential purchase, including from due diligence expenses, legal expenses, survey expenses, other things along the lines of that. We may not spend the full hundred thousand. Uh, we'll keep track of that and and watch what we do uh spend on that um and let you know um and then we can determine whether to leave some money in the this fund for other potential expenditures or to transfer it back, but it will it will take about probably till the end of this fiscal year to figure all that out.
For this source of that? Is this out of our general fund?
Yes, yeah.
The C D R A?
The C D R A.
Agency doesn't have that kind of budget in it?
They the C D R A only has uh sources from two sources. That's from the former um fine time blank um old mill site and the former.
Neither of those are eligible for this.
They're not.
And so the only other way to generate funds to go towards these items is going to be for a transfer from the general fund. So and and we've got to cover those expenditures because they're just kind of on natural expenditures.
If the agency generates income in the future, is that reimbursable?
Possibly, yes. I'll say it depends where the where the revenue comes from. If the revenue came from this particular um yeah, that item, then yes, it would be right now. We don't really have much of an income generator, but there could be some that would pop up as we go through that process. So maybe, how's that?
Well, I think ultimately that should probably be the the goal longer term, but I mean, I mean, obviously, we don't know a lot, so.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a little bit of money in there that could be utilized, you know, for these types of expenditures on a generic basis, but.
And if I may add, you know, we don't have the tax increment proceeds set up fully as well, and that that's part of the reason why there's a delay in really understanding what we do on a reimbursement potentially.
Yeah. Um, item number two, this is a Utah Division of Museums and Art grant, and these are funds that pay for a portion of an S F T E and the expense is already in our budget. It's just recognizing the revenue, so it's actually a benefit to the city for recognizing that revenue. Item number three is uh the sale of two police vehicles that were uh approved here in the past several months. Where they would now utilize these funds to purchase additional vehicles that are utilized in the police department for a variety of reasons uh to be added to some other money that's already in their budget. That's twenty-nine thousand five hundred total. Item number four is a contribution from the Cottonwood Heights Police Department H C. Well, I don't know what H C is.
Honorary Colonels.
Yeah, I knew that. I couldn't pull it out of my brain. Right when he said that, I know it, but from honorary colonels to cover of an employee, a police uh Christmas party that they had that I heard was very stressful. Uh, that's thirty-nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, state of Utah D U I overtime reimbursement for three thousand one hundred and thirty. Uh, number six is Cottonwood Heights Rec Center contribution for the overtime related to the five K on Thanksgiving. That's one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And then there was um an event that Senator Lee had and the police assisted with some overtime to provide some security at that event. Um, that's nine hundred dollars that was uh received from that. So net, there's a use of ninety-five thousand dollars, five hundred, and that's basically the first two items. A hundred thousand dollars for the C D R A fund and then offset by the forty-five hundred dollars from the Division of Museums and Art um on that. Moving down to the Capital Projects Fund. In the Capital Projects Fund, um the Central Utah Water Conservancy District made a contribution to Ferguson uh Park of forty-five thousand five forty-five, and this was because of some of the plants and landscaping that we did there. So they're making a contribution uh for that.
And it was a grant that we prepared and and were able to get from them, so.
And then um in the C D R A fund, and and one thing's gonna have to change on this, and I forgot about this last week with Tim, but all this verbally let you know. So the Hillside Plaza purchase uh to fourteen million. And then the closing costs, our new estimate of the closing cost has this a little bit higher than a hundred and sixty, but we'll get that pinned down a little bit better before our next council meeting and let you know, but it looks like it could be as high as two hundred thousand, just a little under that, so we'll we'll possibly change that amount as we go forward, and that will be covered by bond funds. Um, right now, we have it um listed as bond funding at thirteen million, one hundred and sixty thousand and a million of some grant funds uh that would help to cover cover that. We're still checking to make sure whether or not we can utilize those grant funds for uh debt service payments. If we are, then we might increase the the bond amount to cover the full amount and utilize the the grant to cover debt service, but we we haven't got full clarification on that at this point in time. We're still working with um the state on that. And then number two is the hundred thousand from the general fund to come in to help cover uh those expenses that I talked about before, due diligence, legal surveys and other items that are related more more specifically to Hillside, but potentially to other areas as well. So and that's the details of the budget adjustment that we're looking at at this point in time.
Great. Council, have any questions? Comments? Thanks for your work, Scott. Appreciate that. Okay, so you'll notice that our um agenda is thirty-nine. The next item that we're have is just a review of calendars and upcoming events. We do have a lot going on in the city, so um January twenty-first, which is Saturday, there's a film festival that we've scheduled that Butler Middle School Auditorium, and this will be run by our our Arts Council and the National. Um, we've got a couple of films that we're showing, correct? Starting at four at uh five-thirty, is that right?
Yeah, there's a four four o'clock. Four-thirty is the uh Hawk Watch. We're having a demonstration.
Yeah.
Four o'clock is that and four-thirty is their film.
Okay, okay. So at four o'clock, there will we'll actually have a live. You want to go and look at that, right?
Yeah.
And then and then this first film will start at four-thirty.
I believe that's.
Okay. Okay. February fourth, the Arts Council.
Those are no cost also.
Yeah, is there? Yeah.
Correct.
No cost. Do we know the names of the two films?
Yeah, I have it. Yeah, I pulled it up. Hawk Watch is one, and then the other one is up. Pull it up. I can tell you in a second.
While you're looking at that, the on February fourth, our Arts Council is going to present a culture hip hop event. On to you and Scott and devil, I'll be there. It's called They Ram. Seven P M at Butler Middle School, and there is a cost to this event of of ten dollars. So uh, anyway, Tim.
Okay, so it's so four-thirty is the pre-show. That's with Hawk Watch International. You can learn about Birds of Prey. Five o'clock is the Eagle Huntress. So it's connected to that hot hot watch. And then seven o'clock is Wasteland.
Wasteland. Wasteland. Tim. Starting February ninth at nine A M and every Thursday thereafter until March second, I think that's a total of four, there will be a legislative work session that is a Zoom meeting only and uh where we will get updates from our lobbyists about uh bills that are Make that arrangement, the interlocal between the two entities occur with that backing the sales tax funds for this. So that's what this will be for. More specifics on the bond. And bond parameters, we'll we'll talk about the C D R A meeting in a little bit, but that's what this is.
Questions, comments? We'll have a lot more time to discuss this during the afternoon. And then the last item is approval of the consent calendar, and actually, we don't have those minutes prepared, so we won't be considering those tonight. So one of the things that I failed to mention is is Councilmember Burrell. Um, is is excused. I I don't know if she there's a possibility she might join later.
Texted you and I and she's on her way.
Okay, so it looks like she's on her way and she won't be joining us together later, so.
I don't know if I have space.
You have some space. Okay, so item three on our uh work session agenda, and we only have one staff report for today. And this is specific to what I talked about, proposed budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three. And we'll have our Administrative and Fiscal Services Director Scott Jurges give us some background.
Okay, so there are a number of items that um we need to do budget adjustments on. These are things that we didn't anticipate at the beginning of the year. Or grants and things that we might anticipate, but we don't know the details and we just come. And make that as little adjustments throughout the year, we need we try and hold them down to. No more than once a quarter or so, and this is our second adjustment for the current year. The main um item on this adjustment is has to do with uh things to do with the um the. Possible purchase of uh some property and we'll go into some of that. Um, so I'm sharing my screen here on this. This you have this memo in your. Packet, but to go over, I've got it organized by funds, so first we'll start with the general fund. So in in the general fund, the first item we've got is a transfer to the C D R A fund. And this is to cover various uh expenses related to the Hillside Plaza potential purchase, including from due diligence expenses, legal expenses, survey expenses. Other things along the lines of that. We may not spend the full hundred thousand. Uh, we'll keep track of that and and watch what we do. Uh, spend on that um and let me know um and then we can determine whether to leave some money in the. This fund for other potential expenditures or to transfer it back, but it will it will take about. Probably till the end of this fiscal year to figure all that out.
For this source of that. Is this out of our general fund?
Yes, yeah, the.
C D R A.
The C D R A.
She doesn't have that kind of budget in it?
They the C D R A only has sources from two sources. That's from the former um. Einstein Blank um old mill site and the former.
Neither of those are eligible for this.
Yeah, they're not.
And so the only other way to generate funds to go towards these items is going to be for a transfer from the general fund. So and and we've got to cover those expenditures because they're just kind of.
Cause that.
On natural expenditures.
If the agency generates income in the future, is that reimbursable?
Possibly, yes. I'll say it depends where the where the revenue comes from. If the revenue came from this particular. Um, yeah, that. Item, then yes, it would be right now. We don't really have much of an income generator, but there could be some that would pop up as we go through that process, so. Maybe, how's that?
Well, I think ultimately that should probably be the the goal longer term, but I mean. I mean, obviously, we don't know a lot, so.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a little bit of money in there that could be utilized, you know, for these types of expenditures on a generic basis, but.
And if I may add, you know, we don't have the tax increment proceeds set up.
Yes.
Fully as well, and that that's part of the reason why there's a delay in really understanding what we do on a reimbursement. Potentially, yeah.
Yeah. Um, item number two, this is a Utah Division of Museums and Art Grant. And these are funds that pay for a portion of an S F T E and the expense is already in our budget. It's just recognizing the revenue, so it's actually a benefit to the city for recognizing that revenue. Item number three is uh the sale of two police vehicles that were approved here in the past several months. Where they would now utilize these funds to purchase additional vehicles that are utilized in the police department for a variety of reasons. Uh, to be added to some other money that's already in their budget. That's twenty-nine thousand five hundred total. Item number four is a contribution from the. Cottonwood Heights Police Department H C. Well, I don't know what H P is chief.
Honorary Colonel.
Yeah, I knew that. I couldn't pull it out of my brain. Right when he said that I know, but from honorary colonels to cover a an employee at police uh Christmas party that they had that I heard was very stressful. Uh, that's thirty-nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Um. State of Utah D U I overtime reimbursement for three thousand one hundred and thirty. Uh, number six is Cottonwood Heights Rec Center contribution for the overtime related to the five K on Thanksgiving. That's one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And then there was um an event that Senator Lee had and the police assisted with some overtime to provide some security at that event. Uh, that's nine hundred dollars that was received from that. So net, there's a use of ninety-five thousand dollars, five hundred, and that's basically the first two items. A hundred thousand dollars for the C D R A fund and then offset by the forty-five dollars from the Division of Museums and Art um on that. Moving down to the Capital Projects Fund. In the Capital Projects Fund, um the Central Utah Water Conservancy District made a contribution to Ferguson uh Park. Of forty-five thousand five forty-five, and this was because of some of the plants and landscaping that we did there, so they're making a contribution uh for that.
And it was a grant that we.
Was a grant.
Prepared and and were able to get that from them, so.
And then um in the C D R A fund, and and one thing's gonna have to change on this, and I forgot about this last week with Tim, but I'll just verbally let you know. So the Hillside Plaza purchase uh to fourteen million. And then the closing costs, our new estimate of the closing cost has this a little bit higher than a hundred and sixty, but we'll. Get that painted down a little bit better before our next council meeting. And let you know, but it looks like it could be as high as two hundred thousand, just a little under that, so we'll. We'll possibly change that amount as we get to go forward, and that will be covered by bond funds. Um, right now, we have it um listed as bond funding at thirteen million, one hundred and sixty thousand and. A million of some grant funds uh that would help to cover cover that. We're still checking to make sure whether or not you can utilize those grant funds for. Uh, debt service payments. If we are, then we might increase the the bond amount to cover the full amount and utilize the the grant to cover debt service. But we we haven't got full clarification on that at this point in time. We're still working with um the state on that. And then number two is the hundred thousand from the general fund to come in. To help cover uh those expenses that I talked about before, due diligence, legal surveys and other items that are related. More more specifically to Hillside, but potentially to other areas as well. So and that's the details of the budget adjustment that we're looking at at this point in time.
Great. Council, have any questions? Thanks for your work, Scott. Appreciate that. Okay, so you'll notice that our uh um agenda is thirty-nine. The next item that we're have is just a review of calendars. And upcoming events. We do have a lot going on in the city, so um. January twenty-first, which is Saturday. There the film festival that we scheduled that Butler Middle School Auditorium, and this will be run by our our Arts Council and the natural. Um, we've got a couple films that we're showing correct, starting in four at uh five thirty, is that right?
Yeah, there's a four four o'clock. Four thirty is the. Uh, Hawk Watch, we're having a demonstration.
Yeah.
Four o'clock is that, and four thirty is the film.
Okay, okay, so at four o'clock there we'll we'll actually have a live. You want to go and look at that, right?
Yeah.
And then and then this first film will start at four thirty.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. February fourth, the Arts Council.
Are no cost also.
Yeah, is there? Yeah, no cost, no cost. We know the names of the two films.
Yeah, I have it, you know, and Hawk Watch is one, and then the other one is up. Pull it up, I can tell you in a second.
While you're looking at that, the on February fourth, our Arts Council is going to present a culture hip hop event. On to you and Scott and devil, I'll be there. It's called They Ram. Seven P M at Butler Middle School, and there is a cost to this event of of ten dollars. So, uh, anyway, Tim.
Okay, so it's so four thirty is the pre-show. That's with Hawk Watch International. Can learn about Birds of Prey. Five o'clock is the Eagle Huntress. So it's connected to that hot Hawk Watch. And then seven o'clock is Wasteland.
Wasteland.
Wasteland, yeah. Uh, starting February ninth, that nine A M. And every Thursday thereafter until March second, I think that's a total of four, there will be a legislative work session. That is a Zoom meeting only. And uh where we will get updates from our lobbyists about uh bills that are affecting, possibly affecting our city. Um, and those will be noticed meetings that people can that the the public is welcome to to join. Uh, the the Cottonwood Heights Children's Choir has free registration for grades. Third third through sixth, and their rehearsals are going to start February fifteenth. If you'd like more information, you can visit C H cityarts dot com or contact me and that's all. February twenty-fourth, the Arts Council presents Sweetheart Paint Night. Starting at six thirty here at City Hall, there's also a cost to this for seven dollars and you have to pre-register. As we do have a limited seating. March second is an event we all look forward to from the council at six thirty P M, which is the Youth Council, Youth City Council Dinner. With the mayor and city council. Which is is a fun annual event that we get to participate in.
And our youth mayor will be there tomorrow, so if you have any input. Commentary, you can hit Michael up tomorrow.
Great, what Michael, what's his last name? March eighth, we will have a general plan open house from five thirty until seven thirty, and that will be here at uh City Hall.
What kind of an open house is that?
Michael, you. The General House, General Plan Open.
General Plan.
Uh. Yeah, I don't know. But that's news to me, but it'll be a great open house. We're gonna be right.
It's on the calendar.
All right, there you go.
That's happening, yeah. Uh, March seventeenth and eighteenth, the Cottonwood Heights Arts Council um will will begin. Musical additions for the play Guys and Dolls. And those additions will be here at City Hall as well. And uh, A our April eighth is our annual city Easter egg hunt at Butler Park that'll begin at ten A M. It was amazing how many people were there last year, so we'll look forward to having a big crowd again.
And then and one note on that, just as we did last year, um, yeah, last year. Since we brought it back from COVID being shut down. Uh, we used to do a teen event the night before. But they've changed that to where they're taking the twelve to fifteens and actually having a separate field for them in the morning, so there won't be a separate. Activity the night before. It'll all be on the one morning.
Part of that. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. And then July twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth is our Cottonwood Heights Butlerville Days that we all look forward to, so. And if you we we always need volunteers and sponsors, please. Visit ButlervilleDays dot com or call and etchell. Here at the city. Um, okay, so we uh. Um, I'm gonna, this is has a little bit of a specific um direction, so I'm gonna uh. Let you know, we are going to take a motion. I will take a motion to move into a closed meeting. For the purpose of character and professional competence conduct. Um, after which we will adjourn the work session and move into a C D C D R A meeting. The C D R A meeting will start as a closed meeting as well to discuss property acquisition. After which we will resume the open public C D R C D R A meeting. So could I get a motion?
We'll have to start the C D R meeting first and then go to a closed meeting, correct?
We're gonna start it.
This is the motion to start it.
Do you want to do the whole bit?
Yes, just because of Zoom, we have.
Well, if if you're okay with that, then. I would move that we close our open session and open a closed session for the purpose of discussing the personal com- competence of an individual. And then uh at is a time certain. And then following that, we will move to a C D R A closed meeting to discuss um litigation, property acquisition and or the character and professional competence. Of an individual.
And I'll second that.
Great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.